On that note, I call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Selectmen Work Session being held on Thursday, February 20th, 2020 at 3:00 PM in the first floor conference room. And I'll begin with some announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping and by Selectmen Cant for future posting on YouTube. There is no one else here who is recording. There's an attendance sheet and you're actually gonna have to now delete David Larsen's name.
Is he okay?
Well, it's funny you said that because I almost put him on there as a joke.
Yeah, when he's not here, you wonder.
Yeah, we kind of, we hope David, Dave, we hope he's doing well. And then we have a relatively focused agenda today and I'm going, the first thing we're gonna do is do the town meeting warrant review and for this, I'd like to pass it over to Kevin Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Afternoon, everybody. So just my follow-up from our last meeting. We had a chance to get a very high-level list out of some of the items that we're looking at from the warrant. As we talked about, there are no citizens petitions that we received. So the ones that we talked about, the ones that I have an updated sheet that I'll provide in a second, are ones that are internal requests that have come through, raised from a number of different departments. So my hope today is, because we did touch on a high level, hopefully since the last Wednesday, you had any thoughts about any of the things that were provided, we might have a chance to talk through it a little bit more and also obviously if there's anything that is not on the list, that's something that we want to consider to put on there too, it certainly is not too late, we just wanted to know sooner than later.
Can I just ask, is this where the exotic animal item of the?
No. Oh, you're talking about doing your review.
Well, it would be on the warrant.
It'd be on the warrant, but the content of it would be.
I just don't see it listed. Did I miss it?
The next, look at the next item on the agenda, that's when we're gonna talk.
Right, but it's not on the list of the warrant. These are all the warrant items.
Right here it is.
Is it?
On the.
Thank you.
On this?
It's, well, it's still there. I don't know what you're.
This is what was on board docs, this is the.
Well, see, it's listed here too.
This is what everything.
Yeah, but that's not the warrant that was put together.
I understand.
This is right here, the O.S.A. post of the warrant.
It is, but this is their draft of everything that's in the warrant, what they put on board docs and I was just wondering if for some reason it had been removed since it's not listed on.
This is all that's on there, I think.
No, that was.
Well, see, I haven't seen that.
Let me, let me just provide some clarity, so.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I see it, it's the very last one, exotic animal bylaw.
So the document that you're looking at was an item that Catherine and I worked on previously. It's, it's not an updated version, the version that we're going to be putting on board docs. Version I'm giving you now has been an evolving document.
Okay.
Working with the departments to get more information on them.
Of course.
Some of them, for instance, have been eliminated since the last meeting, even as of Wednesday. So the doc, the item I'm passing on now is the most recent one, I asked you to take a look at. This is just a historical look at from a previous meeting.
And it's evolving.
Okay, so then we shouldn't be referencing.
A whole Dave Larson's list, I think.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be referencing this one at all?
The one that I've just given you is a hard copy.
If you look at the top of it, it's 2017, 2018, those are like from last year, I think it's just given you a reference.
This is 2020.
Mine's 2018. Really?
The one on board docs says 2020 annual town meeting. So I just had some questions about the consent agenda, it was starred various groupings. So if this isn't current, I won't ask.
Yeah, it's my fault.
I think it was just more the template, I think she was going for and that was it.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that that's cleaned up on board docs to make sure the documents that we're looking at now are accurate, so there's any confusion in the future. So the one we're looking at now is just basic, like I said, it's, it's very similar to the one I provided last week to you folks, but with a little bit more information on there and I also have some more details as we go through these, as we discuss them, I can provide some more backup to them, I guess. So we can just go down the list if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. There's just some definitely questions and things here.
Sure. So the part-time planner, which is the first item on this list, been working with actually a couple of departments internally on that, discussing it and providing, pulling some information on what that position might look like. It's still very much a work in progress, but we're working on those details and we have a good, a good handle on some of the core objectives of what that position, uh, core duties and objectives of what that position would entail. One thing that I want to do though is subsequent to any decisions made or if this is something we want to continue to pursue, making sure that the following this meeting, like the plan would be to reach out to the Chair of the Planning Board, give them an update on it, as well as our internal team that might work with a planning position, just so they know where we are in the process. Specifically, what we're looking at with this position, as you know, Donna Rich is our Planning Board Administrator and so there is some elements that she currently works with the Planning Board, the zoning board appeals on. What she, what she does is very important, but there certainly appears to be an opportunity from a, a planner position for more depth around planning for the town, especially around the downtown revitalization effort. We've talked about the master plan, for example, and creating efficiencies within the organization for people who want to do business here, we've talked about creating the plan, uh, project review team, for example, events, things of those natures, so helping to coordinate activities to help draw people into the town. It's sort of a, very much a catch-all position with sort of economic development, you know, helping with some of those efforts with Donna from administrative being another resource for her and the boards and also really helping on, on driving a lot of the initiatives that we've, we've talked about a number of times in a number of meetings. Grants as well, I want to make sure, and that's really, really important part of this position, as I've been here for eight weeks, ninth week, learning every day, learn a lot more about how the organization.
One of these days you'll be him counting the years.
I hope so, hopefully. It goes by quick, so it'll happen before we know it. But the, you know, in the beginning, I know MAPC actually, when they did their downtown revitalization, one of the recommendations was to look at that.
They did.
And talking about, talking with you folks as a group and individually too, it seemed like to be something that we, we should have a conversation on and what that looks like. So I started to talk about the grants, the grants are a really important component of this, there are a lot of grants, green community grants, mass works grants.
Tons of grants.
That are out there in this.
Dozens.
That, from a capacity standpoint, you know, having somebody who could be applying for these grants and then administrating these, being administrator of the grants would be a very, very helpful thing for the town. We hired a grant director in Beverly and that position every year more than pays for itself and then some. So the hope would be at a part-time position is what we've talked about in the past, that a good section, a good portion of that person's time would be around the grants and that they would be able to source grants and help in the administration of it to allow us to receive more funds, to do more things, but also hopefully bring up some capacity within the departments as well to a certain level. I'm still learning about how much capacity we might be able to earn, find within there, but that's certainly something we would look to hopefully be able to accomplish as well.
Kelly, I have a question on this and again, I may have just missed something here. At one point, we were talking about a capital item to set aside $10,000 to be put towards granting and now this is planning and now this is a part-time planning position. I missed the evolution and I mean, I think it's great, but I just.
So this is, like I said, it's absolutely up to debate what we want to do with this. The reason this is a part-time planner was that I think that outsourcing a component of it for $10,000, I'm not sure if we're gonna get what we want out of that position.
I, I, the rationale's good, I'm glad to see this. I also didn't know whether this was here because you were aware of any particular support among FinCon members and so on.
I've talked with some of the FinCon members, not directly in a meeting setting, but I have mentioned that this is something that there's conversations around and that this is likely something that will be bringing in front of them as well to, to look.
I'm expecting that, I could name half of the team who I think would say this is a great idea.
Yeah, and I.
I'm sure the other half though.
You know, it's, it's, you know, a lot of times in those FinCon meetings, we're talking about how we can sort of, you know, narrow our, our scope of what we're doing, but you know, the conversation I had with a couple of the members was about, you know, all the things that people are hoping in the community that I've heard and that you've shared with me about wanting to see more investment potentially. And so this, this is something I think that hopefully they'll support, but there certainly needs to be a much broader conversation than what's happening.
No, I think it's good, I think it belongs on there, I'm totally in favor of this and pleased that it has gone from what seemed to be kind of a maybe adequate, politely compromise of a $10,000 pool from which we could get some planning assistance to this to be a person assigned on a regular basis, assuming we can find them, which I suspect we can.
I think there's a, same reason I was attracted to Topsfield, but from the leadership standpoint, the community support and the opportunity that, that's, that's here, I think personally it would be an exciting opportunity for somebody.
Good time for somebody to come.
Yeah, obviously full-time is typically more attractive for somebody who has a degree in planning, who's ready to want it, but you know, there's people who either are tail ends of their careers or who might just want to find different things from a work-life balance where, you know, 19 hours, whatever it might be at the end of the day, might be attractive to them, that's my hope at least.
You mentioned earlier that you've been talking to some people, other organizations around town about that position.
Who, who are they, can you tell me who you've been talking to?
Oh, the part-time planner?
Yeah.
Well, the FinCon, they, that came up because, you know, there are a lot of conversations around staffing.
Well, they should be involved.
Absolutely. Mentioned it with, very early in the process, it's always been very high level of sort of just things that I'm learning and things I'm hearing because for, I'm still in my listening sessions with people to learn in the community, that's something that I've heard repeatedly, so Martha Morrison, I mentioned it to her as well. And I know that when I've spoken to, I've met with a number of different groups around master plans, people come out of Boston, groups that, that do this for a living and have talked about, I try to explain what's going on at Tops, why this is an interesting place and why that, you know, master plan is necessary and part of that, that sort of conversation when I talked about it is that we're looking at a part-time planner, which might make sense. And I've spoken to other communities as well, I just try to get a gauge for what they're, how they do their planning efforts as well. And so that's, and I think there's been a couple of people who've come through, trying to go in the way back because it's, you know, we talked about the downtown revitalization typically, you know, we talked about the project review team that we're creating and all the opportunities from an infrastructure standpoint, grants, et cetera, and usually at some point, just talking about, you know, that there has been some recommendations and conversations about a part-time planner potentially, so.
Have you talked to the businesses at all?
Yes, I, I, it's, but it hasn't been in-depth specifically around that, it's more of sort of that list of things that we're doing and in aggregate, talking about how we're on the cusp of some really great things going on. And this is just one of those tools in the toolbox to hopefully continue that momentum in terms.
The ability to, it won't take much energy to double the number of grants we receive and the leverages that they will provide in moving forward, very exciting, so I think this is a huge opportunity and will make a big difference. And everyone I've talked to, both at MMA and other people I know in the field, everybody says that when done properly, if you assign grant writing to a planner, you pay for their position. It sometimes takes a year to sort of see that coming true, but it allows, you have somebody who represents the town, running grants for the state and sometimes federal and it's amazing what.
Well, even just the two that we did, you know, for the downtown revitalization, that was $45,000.
Yep.
And that was part-time for us amongst other things that we were doing.
And Kelly did the complete streets, which is, we had almost half a million dollars worth of grants that we put together, essentially Kelly did that as part of her job, the others were put together by folks who just kind of took the time to do it, not as an efficient job description and thinking of someone who could keep track of the possibilities, some of them really helped you kind of tee up a little sequence of them with an agency and so on. I'm very excited about this because it's our goal, not just mine, I know. As much state and other people's money as we can spend before we ask our residents to pay and when we do ask our residents to pay, that they see it's really, they're getting to contribute relatively speaking, pennies on the dollar for the value that we receive because of all the grants that we've gotten, because of the private commitments and so on and so forth. And best thing about this so far, as far as I know, this is the first potential money for downtown revitalization as well as other things that we've gone and asked them for. It's a pretty small amount compared to what we think we're headed out with the podiums.
And we've talked to the town before about trying to come up with creative ways of, of bringing in revenue.
Yeah.
And this is one of those, this is a revenue source for sure. And it's the only way I really think that we're going to get traction on the revitalization because everybody is just working already 40 to 50 hours. You just can't add that on top and expect people to have the focus and the time to do it.
Your conversations with other people around town, department heads and more various departments, I get the impression that feeling is fairly positive for moving forward with that idea?
Yeah, so just kind of go in the wayback machine, before I started, I know with all the department heads and a couple of them did comment that, you know, when I asked them, you know, where there's opportunities where we might be able to do better and this was one of the things that was raised. So when I mentioned that when we were putting together some of the list of things that the position will do, I went to those department heads who had originally said this is something that we think would benefit the town, they said, "Help me with, help me put some ideas down on paper," so trying to get that buy-in as well in the process, so yeah, so we've been, we've, it certainly seems like something that they see a benefit because like I said too, directly in some cases, hopefully it can free up a little bit of capacity for some people so they can handle all their items that are pressing or, or are part of their responsibilities beyond just the grants.
Can we just go, does anyone feel this is not the right thing to do? To put it on the warrant, to ask the town?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I think, I think the town is in, in the condition that it's in primarily because we haven't had anybody that has concentrated on trying to fix anything, so I'm, I'm totally in favor of it.
Dave, give a opinion.
I'm gonna take a different high-level view. I'm, I'm a bit concerned about where we are with our funding for the coming year. We know that our debt cost is going up, so that doesn't affect two and a half because it's debt exclusion, but it does affect taxes. So everybody's gonna get hit with more taxes than they would otherwise get hit if you had a, you know, if the debt was running at a level rate, you know, that's not gonna increase or decrease, whatever you have, but we know that it's going up. So from the point of view of taxes, we've got one hit that we have to deal with. Good news is, you come in with a capital plan that is within the guideline of 300,000. Granted, we're using a premium from the bonds to get to some of the clocks.
Well, we're, we're paying for it with other sources of money, but nevertheless it fits.
Yeah, yeah, right. The point is that, that's, that's, that's a good news sign. When we look at the omnibus budget that we've gone through, we have apparently added here and there, some hours, six hours here, six hours there, in different departments, whatever else, so we've added more labor to our things already as part of the budget and we know that we have things like an 8% on the police budget. Now, the police budget is not one of those small little ones like lights for the streets, okay, this is, this is the big budget.
I think eight came down, didn't it?
Well, it came down perhaps by, by 25.
To like in the fives.
Like $28,000 or whatever, but.
But into the fives?
It's five?
Five and, and change percent, I believe it's.
That's good, but that's still way over guideline and certainly over two and a half, but again, on a big budget, we have the fire department that's blowing out also on the budget, you know, what they're asking for.
Are they blowing out on the budget, the fire department? I thought they were coming in fairly close.
There's a $65,000 ask for additional coverage.
There is, but when you look here every year?
Yep.
Well, we don't need the detail.
Yeah, but I, I don't think they went up.
It's not two and a half, it's not the two and a half area that we're looking at. I'm, I'm not looking at the detail, I'm wanting to keep it at a high level.
Can I see?
Then we know about the schools. We know that the elementary schools are looking at something in the order of 12%. We know that Masconoma is looking in that kind of category and that we will share a larger burden of Masconoma's budget this year because of the change in, in student population. So with all of these things that we see and they have to be resolved within the next six weeks, we got our hands full on making a budget that is not gonna drive an override like we would see.
Pause just a second, Wendy, do you have something?
I asked Wendy for the exotic animals to join us for that.
I can come back, keep the text later.
Okay, so I want to just send a text message.
Yeah, why don't we send you a text message so that you don't have to hang around here?
That works great.
Stimulating his decision.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Just as an aside, the fire department is less than half a percent overall increase. They're 0.43%.
And that, but that, does that include that $65,000?
Yeah, in other words, one of the things that are in other, not, not within, not within the guideline budget, but other, that's not in there, that's going to drive these budgets.
So the above guidelines?
The above guidelines, so. Like $65,000.
Does not include the $65,000?
No, so on a base budget total.
We should be able to look at the red out here.
Yes, I'm just looking at their total budget when we're talking about magnitude. I was just looking at their total budget to see the magnitude of what $65,000 does against a million and change.
Yeah, and I think there's more than just 65 on there, isn't there, there's something else, we, we know what the, it should be shown in red there, but we know what it is. Again, I'm not trying to get into the details of them, you, you know it's more, you know it's more than the guideline.
What you're saying is, we damn well better be cautious about where we're going.
Well, exactly, we should, we, we have to take, we have to take a high-level view of things now, I mean, it's so, it's so obvious to us, again, I don't know about the schools, I know what they're looking at, I guess they're asking for it, they will be asking for it and both of them, and again, with Masconoma, we know it's not only the amount, but our greater share because of the change in population that happens. Good news on Masconoma is we're gonna save some money on the debt, the debt's going down. The debt, if I remember, is about 250, 290, something like that and that, so we're gonna pick up some money there, that's good news, but it's not gonna cover 10% or 12% increase in the, in their request for funds. The point is that at a high level, there's a number of big things that are, that are just hitting us and I think, I think we've got to be extremely careful about what we're doing and again, we look at the budget and say, oh, half a percent, but that's without trying to, well, all these things that people expect are gonna happen. 65, the chief expects that to happen, the 5%, the police expect that to happen. Now, now, if we can work with them and say, you know, you gotta get it down to 2%, okay, then, okay, maybe we're, we're at least on our operating budget, which represents about half of, about, yeah, about half of, of all the budget, that, okay, that'd be good, but I don't, I don't see that happening. So I'm, so in answer to the question about some detailed things like this, it's, it's good, but I think we have to have a realistic attitude about what we're up against.
I do too and I think we don't have all the numbers yet, so it's an incomplete picture to be able to weigh one thing against the other, we don't have the school budgets. I don't know what those numbers are.
Well, we do have a school budget.
I don't.
We do.
We, meaning Kevin, but we have not seen it.
Okay, so why don't you update us then on the budget?
Sure, and in my apologies, I don't have them in front of me, not knowing we were gonna get to the budget, but the, the Masco budget is, I think, roughly 5.6% increase and part of that is driven by the enrollments and the changes. What's actually happened is all of the enrollments from the other two district, the other two communities has gone down substantially, where we've, we're basically, well, I think we're actually two students less, so total enrollment's gone down, but the ratio of our enrollment reduction versus the other, the other communities had, offsets basically, there's still a budget number at the end of the day that we're gonna be on and the budget doesn't necessarily go down, necessarily, it's, it's not a variable cost of the entire budget in a sense, there's certainly not exactly the kid, but.
What share did, were we last year and what share are we?
I can grab a budget if it's sitting on my desk right now.
Any odd percent? It's, it's like in the order of half a percent. Which talks about it, yeah, it's, it's half, it's less than 1% change from 26.5 to 27.2 or something like that, in order of magnitude, that's what's happening. What it means is, whatever the budget goes up and is spread out to anybody, we have to add 0.7 more. It's not a big deal, but it's one more thing that's, that's, it's a, the reason it's a bigger deal is because it's whatever the 0.7, whatever, on a big number. It's always, you know, it's on the streetlights, it's not so big, but when it's on Masconoma schools, police, fire, those are the big kinds of budgets that we're dealing with.
One thing I'd, I'd like to just make sure I sort of put out there is, is when I entered into the process, it was past that point when I could sort of plan for this, but what I'd like to do heading into this year is I've built relationships with both this new superintendent in Masco and with Dr. Morrison and the union, is to have conversations as early as the summer, thinking about next year and, you know, explaining sort of what our, where, how we're gonna do our, perform, put together our budget for the coming year and what we're gonna have for targets and looking at what our growth, our growth would be and understanding if, coming this coming year, what major expenditures they're anticipating and what that might look like, so that, you know, as the process has been, as I've sort of observed, it's, it's a lot of independence of how the different budgets get presented, you know, our budget works through us and through the FinCon, the school budgets work through their school committees and then through them to the FinCon and then it all kind of hits with a timeline of, of a date that everything has to be reconciled and presented for that town meeting, so my hope is that through building those relationships to have conversations, I don't know what that will, what fruit that will bear necessarily within the budget next year, but at the very least, we'll have our eyes wide open, understanding at least partially open what we're gonna be seeing as I prepare my budget and they prepare theirs.
So we have hopes for next year, I mean, that's great, but that's not who we are.
No, understood.
If you add in Masco and you add in the elementary school increases and you add in our budget with what people are asking for in the red, over guideline, where are we? What percentage increase are we?
I don't think I have that on me.
We've, we've done the best job we possibly could and we're getting hit with an unfortunate situation in Masco, it's real dollars, whether it's our fault or not.
Regardless, I just don't know where we are as a number.
But I've looked at Vice Chair's basically the, the actual dollar amounts, because once we get beyond the percentages, then it becomes, what's the dollar amount of an override that they're gonna be asking for? So like, for instance, as their preliminary budget, and I'll say that, emphasize preliminary because I think the number will come down as they work through the school committee, my hope is, that it's an $833,000 above guideline request. So that's, that's in, in one school item for the union and then, and that's again, preliminary, that number's not a, a fixed number at this point, I know that they have to still work through their process. And I think, I'd want to make sure I give you the right number on the Masco one, I received this later in the process, I haven't had a chance to do preparation for other things to really look at the exact numbers of where they're, where they're at.
Just to refresh the process, the, the budget was developed, it's proposed, where does it go now and what are the opportunities to try to get that more in line with a number that the taxpayers can bear?
The school, the school side.
Yeah.
So my understanding.
You're talking about elementary or Masconoma?
Well, so what I've learned today and if I miss, I know Chair, you, with Masco, you've, you've had some experience in that process, I might defer to you on the school, on that side, but on the union side, my understanding is that the, the budget was presented to the school committee, they subsequently have meetings with the superintendent and his team, similar to how we're doing it, to go through the budget and identify all the increases, review them and then, I don't know exactly at what point, but it's at a point they'll have a budget that the school committee, that. I don't know exactly at what point, but it's at a point they'll have a budget that the school committee then presents to the FinCom and the FinCom, and that's coming much soon, I think. And then they'll, they'll look at that budget the same way they looked at our budget, where they go line for line and ask questions, better understand it, and then they go back and say, you know, these are, these are areas where we need to have a further conversation on it. This is the number where we're gonna end up being at.
I think it's fair to say the FinCom is not put down typically by the, on Masco. I think.
They don't.
They don't.
In fact, Masco starts in November. I think of all the meetings ever had and all meetings there, you could probably count the number of FinCom people from other towns, never tops field. All the years combined on two hands. And they kind of do their thing. They're in a different situation because they have to create one budget to sell three places as opposed to the union, which has to create a different budget for each town. And so.
With separate approvals for three separate budgets, it's, it's obvious, but that's.
The one big thing that they did this year, which I thought was a good, a good decision, and the fact that put out an early letter, was the letter talking about the fact that we're not gonna be doing anything big in capital this year because we're gonna review our strategic plan. And they can look at a view of not just the nuts and bolts to keep the physical building together, but what, with, they will be considering necessary investments in educational technology, which may not be all that significant, but if you're rebuilding an area, a wall, and it turns out you really wanna turn that into a flexible classroom, well, cheaper to do them both at the same time if you're gonna need the flexible classroom anyway. So they're working all that out.
Okay. Has Masco gone before FinCom?
They don't go before FinCom.
Not yet.
There's no need.
No, they don't. They, they submit their budget and basically it's kind of an up or down.
Okay, so five point six is there and that's not gonna.
To be fair, there is typically a budget review meeting. I don't know what they're doing this year with it, but there had been in the past budget review meetings typically this last Saturday of February, where everyone was invited to come in. It was a Saturday morning and went through it in great, in great detail. Well, not line by line, but in pretty good detail, over three hours to have an understanding of what was there and be able to ask questions or whatever else. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't remember hearing much about this year's. Do you know anything more about this year's?
I don't.
No, okay, that's fine. We're not gonna spend time on it.
But it's usually an explanation, not a.
Where we've been in the past, that's where we've been.
So that's an expla- explanation, but does that five point six change as a result of that meeting?
No, not usually.
Okay. It's just a readout of how they got to that number.
Well, like you said, it's, it's an explanation, not a, not a.
It's not, it's not a discussion.
Not a negotiation.
The chance to discuss are during the budget committee meetings they hold earlier in the year. They are posted and everything, but they don't send notices around saying, hey, we're gonna talk about this budget thing now. You can go look and go, but at this point, I don't think Masco has done, certainly while I was here. We were putting invitations out kind of broadly, nobody would come, and I think it was sort of a, doesn't matter, just do our thing, we're gonna come up with it.
Okay, so that's.
The biggest challenge too at Masco traditionally was Middleton wanted one thing their way, Boxer wanted another thing their way, and Topsaw wanted another thing their way. And one of the things that I was trying to do at the very end of my time was to say, let's let the funding be a decision of the town. You tell us whether you want it in this form, that form, and so on and so forth. Do you want us to build up a capital stabilization fund, or do you want us to come for everything? Ultimately, we're gonna ask you to pay for it, what's best for you. We'll let the FinComs do that and let us figure what we need educationally on the basis that that's not really, you know, we try to keep it down as much as possible. Be interesting to see how it evolves.
Okay, so five point six is set then for Masco?
If I could just correct that, so the, the total for the district was five point six. That was the number that was in my head when I said it without it in front of me. The actual change for our assessment is six point nine percent.
That's because of the change.
That's point seven, I thought.
That's good, yeah, that's right, yeah, that's it. And if you take the debt assessment, so as the chairman was mentioning earlier, that's falling off. If you net that together, it's actually, they're proposing a four percent increase.
Four?
Four percent.
And that dollar value that, because we were looking at the eight hundred thirty-three thousand for elementary schools, the dollar value?
If you include the debt, it's a three hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollar increase.
One of the challenges Masco.
Over guideline or total?
Total.
Total.
And so this is the, this is, so if you, if the debt, if you take the debt away, because that, that was a big change this year, absolutely. You're just looking at their operations, which, I mean, if you're gonna think forward thinking too, of what the budget might look like in the future, that six point nine is their operation increase this year.
Well, not that six point nine is not, the five is their operational increase, the six point nine is the varies.
Right. Right, correct.
In my mind, in my mind, you may go back to where Masco was and the question about how you deal with it. The issue in my mind is what is the increase in their operating budget? If there's a change in the number of students, that's the responsibility of the town, whether it goes up or down. I've always felt that there's a kind of, a harmless, I think, you know, town based on the change that we have, but it's the total budget, operating budget, that makes the difference that they can manage to or that they can, should manage to. You can't manage the Topsfields versus Boxers because that's based on the number of students.
That's enrollment.
We're gonna throw some students out from there. So the, the real number is that five point six is the operating change. And somebody might say, well, okay, how many teachers did you take away because we know we have fewer students? Oh, we, we took two, two students, oh, two teachers. Oh, okay, fine, is that enough? Yeah. Or should be more, should be less, you know? Those are the kinds of questions that typically will go on when there's a change in the number of students. And when the, when the budget is over three percent, if that's the guideline, what are the things that are in there that, you know, provide a justification for going over the guideline? What, what happened that you can't keep within the guideline?
The other thing about Masco, which times I felt very strongly was ignored or at least not given enough to, Masco being its own district, paid their own retirement, make their own OPEB contributions, allow their own, so on and so forth. So some of the things that, not, towns will pick up everything, town picks up some things. So Masco's on its own and always felt that it should be given a little more leeway. They weren't asking for twice as much. Just because they took care of a lot of that stuff. That said, sort of when the towns were going three percent for education, Masco, four percent would be sort of equivalent in terms of the extra costs that Masco has. What I suspect and fear to an extent is that we're gonna start seeing next year or the year after a ramp up of requests from Masco because the building will be falling down, they will necessarily have to make minimum repairs, and they're gonna become increasingly expensive. And borrowing, building another structure, which is obviously what you certainly hope you don't have to do. Now does not a school being built in Massachusetts that's less than a hundred million. Taking and making that fifty dollar, fifty million dollar building last long. If you can put thirty, thirty-five million into making that happen, that's ultimately a good investment. Still, it's real dollars out of everybody's pocket, but I think we're gonna see a ramp up from Masco. What they are going to try to do, and I'm not on it, so I don't have deep insight now, but the idea was that as the debt went off, they bring on new debt and try to keep it steady. And maybe where the debt went off before the new came on, take that little valley, put it into capital stabilization so that we don't have to borrow as much, those sorts of things, we're having conversations, but it's very unfortunate that this year, when supposedly we were gonna get a breather of a year, normally Topsaw was going down relative to the other towns, Middleton was going up, 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 up. And this is the year that we happened to catch the extra point seven.
The point seven, yeah, but that's not the, yeah, it's important, but it's not.
It matters, it's not critical, and it's better than them asking for eight percent.
Is there anything that's a big deal as creating the five point six percent operating change? I mean, with the decrease on the students, do you know what kind of, is that a big deal?
You know, the last contract, which we did just before I left, was pretty reasonable. That, of course, always goes up. The only thing I can imagine that is really volatile are the special needs and so on because we have to do things with the state, we can't.
I just wonder if there's some.
Yeah.
I was looking at the budget first.
We, we are enjoying the fact that the debt is roll, is rolling off.
Yeah.
But as you wisely point out, there's no question that the debt is, one way or another, is going to come back.
It's gonna come back.
Because you did the facility study, you paid the money for it, it's an excellent kind of study apparently, it was not a slipshot. It really looked at things, and it had thirty million dollars over, over the next ten years. So we know that there'll be more debt that's gonna come on. It's not gonna be paid with simply operating funds. So we enjoyed it this year, that's fine, and I, okay, but next year, the year after, it's gonna come on.
That's the ramp up you're talking about, the cap up.
The, the other thing though, be careful of, and, and I absolutely agree with you, there's no question, but that Masco is totally responsible for everything because it's a district, there's no, like, as we would have healthcare as part of the general budget instead of individual school. The issue is not that they have more things that they're responsible for, that's into the operating budget one way or the other, it's in there. The issue is, of those things that are different from the way we do our schools, are those things growing at a faster or slower rate than the average thing, like teacher salaries? And in fact, health insurance has typically.
Health insurance or retirement is it going?
Five to, five to, and retirement, okay, more than what you would expect from two and a half or whatever else. But that could at some point be helpful if you get paid up on your retirements and whatever else. So it's, it's not an issue that you take care of everything, it's that of the, of the things that you take care of, everything that are different from the elementary schools, are those things increasing at a faster rate than the rest of it or at a lower rate? And those particular things, the two that you point out, have been typically going up at the faster rate. And that's why that's an issue for Masco, and Masco saying, well, we have a right to move, get more money. Percent, percent.
On Masco specifically to the question of this year, were the increases specifically within the budget? There is a breakout that's provided with the document I have. Just a couple of quick highlights, it's add district tuition, one, two hundred seventy thousand dollars, eleven point three percent increase year-over-year. That's unfunded mandate, must do.
Yeah, that's right.
Student service, services consultant and service providers, hundred eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Year-over-year increase, eighty-four point five percent increase. And then there's a number of other ones with higher percentages that are around forty thousand dollar increases. Transportation for special education, sixty-seven thousand dollar increase year-over-year, or eighty, eighty point seven percent increase.
The big one was this two hundred and something for outer district, right?
Two hundred seventy thousand.
And do you know what, is that, is that assuming zero percent on a circuit breaker? I assume that they have to do it that way when they do the budget?
We get some on circuit breaker, but it's a fairly small amount. That is the net, that's the net. The other thing is, they don't see how many students. It's possible one student could account for all that, highly unlikely. That's probably four students or something like that. It's like when Topsaw got, actually, we got hit, Masco got hit before, when we had six students move in over the summer, all very highly needed discussion. That was a four hundred fifty thousand hit, just those six students. So it's probably a handful.
The issue is, if, if it, if it doesn't include the circuit breaker, then that's money that will fall to E and D at the end of the year that they can put into, as you pointed out, stabilization.
And you can't budget for circuit breaker because it's applied the year after. You don't get circuit breaker until you've done it and it's the year after accounting, so.
But the point is, it will fall to, if it's, yeah.
It's after the fact.
Yeah, circuit breaker shows up after the fact.
I think if you tax it, if you, if you assume zero, zero from the state, then you tax it, but the taxing that you do, if you use it wisely, in this big cases, you would, I think, suggest it falls to E and D because you leave it as free cash, you don't, you don't buy another teacher, so it's free, it falls to free cash, and the E and D, if it's too much, you put it into stabilization, which is then available, especially for, we know, a bunch of capital costs coming up at Masco.
So getting back to that total number then, if we know Masco was set at that number in our percentage, if we add in the over guideline, our regular budget, the elementary schools, what they're asking for right now, even though it may go down some, where do we stand? Because.
I'll get you that information, I don't have.
We need to know that to figure out what of, of these things do we say we just can't afford, we shouldn't do? How off the mark are we?
Yeah, and I think from, looking at it from a capital perspective relative to the budget, they all, again, and they tie in together. The three hundred thousand dollars, I think it's based on financial policies that were created, is sort of the target. Each year based on our budget. For, for capital.
For capital. Three hundred, okay.
OPEB as well, correct.
That three hundred thousand had become.
You did a good job. I saw the number, we talked about it last time, three hundred thousand even, okay.
That has become kind of a policy.
Correct, correct.
That three hundred thousand is their.
Yeah, and where to it.
Yeah.
The, the one thing is, we're on for that.
Right, so I think.
It's not big enough, in my opinion, but.
And that's a discussion item too, in the future.
I mean, we're gonna need more than that as we move forward because, because our buildings are getting old.
So I'm.
Every building's getting old, but this one.
But we've got a couple of them that are really.
Like new.
Yeah, yeah. They're all getting older.
We may wanna go on to the other ones to just get a sense of what these include, so then we can have a discussion of.
I think, I think we should go through with that.
Yeah, but we do, she said.
You asked me about that one, and I'm hearing more, and I'm saying, we need to be realistic in what we look at. Let me, but since, the, the other piece of it is, we do have to be careful about the grants. Because the grants are great, and look at the money we got for the grants. However, the, the point might be that if we didn't have a grant writer and didn't get the grants, we sure as heck wouldn't spend the money. We would not do complete streets for four hundred thousand dollars to put a sidewalk around Grove Street.
We would not.
I mean, that is like, I can't believe how much money we're gonna spend.
We could do so many other things.
I'd a lot rather use that money.
That's how much it costs us to fix the, the bridge over, uh, all the bridge road.
I'd a lot rather spend that four hundred thousand on something else.
Yeah, in that case, I agree with you. Downtown, I think, is a separate animal. There are lots of needs downtown and the, the community is asking.
That will pay us back in various ways.
It, it's gonna bring us in money, okay, that's going to replace what we would have otherwise spent. You just have to be careful with it because it's not always.
Not all grants.
No, we free money.
And then there's also the strings that come with some of them.
Yeah, not, we're just saying, it's basically not all grants replace taxpayer-funded commitments.
Sure.
Commitments.
Right, we wouldn't spend it anyway, but it didn't have it.
There are some things.
Additional spending.
There are. There are other commitments we would undertake with state support that will improve the quality of life and ultimately have, I believe, some positive financial impact, downtown being a good example. Maybe not right off the bat, but, no, I do think we have to be careful on, on that. Just because you had a grant doesn't mean.
I didn't wanna take a lot of time, but it's just.
I think it's similar to what we were saying about the buildings. You can have beautiful buildings to start and then let them deteriorate, and at some point, it's a problem.
Yeah.
We have not done anything with the downtown, we've let it deteriorate, and it has to be addressed, I think.
It's only gonna get worse.
The same way that we would do with that facility.
It's not gonna get better, and it'll be more of a liability, and that will have an.
Just.
Last comment, then we'll move on.
I wouldn't use those words with the citizens, because we did use four hundred thousand at the Champaign ninety to redo the sidewalks and the curb cuts and ramps and the.
Yeah, that, that's maintenance of the road.
In the last two years, we did maintenance of.
Of the roads and sidewalks.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay.
Just be careful.
So anyway, let's move on. I realize that'll end up a lot of things, but Kevin, number two.
Absolutely. And we, we started a conversation a little bit on this last week. Organization of the Highway and Park Cemetery Commissioners. There was, I know historically there was a conversation that's happened over a number of years around this, and that, that being the department heads for the highway and for the parks and cemetery reporting directly to the town administrator.
And water.
And water, that was part of the conversation, yeah, absolutely. Those are the three that have been part of the conversation in the past. When I came on, it was something that was brought to my attention with the, the near retirement of, of our former superintendent, Dave Bond of the Highway and the upcoming retirement of Steve Shepherd. And that, at the very least, the conversation around that type of model should take place. Because of those retirements, it's an opportunity to take, to take a closer look at it and to.
Okay, so here's my, here's my take on it. We, we, we're gonna do cost benefit on this. We're gonna try to understand what the cost benefit of doing this, if we're gonna do it. I will tell you that it'll help tear up the town, we can do it, but make sure you do it well as far as the writing of how you, you know, put it together. But this one will tear up the town and.
When you say tear up the town, what do you mean?
Well, you're gonna have factions on two sides, and you heard the people. Well, you're gonna have factions on two sides, and you heard the people that came in here and represented them. We have a, a working session, it was pretty clear where it was coming from. We have a study that was done. Anybody can read the study, they can read the small print at the very end that kinda has, well, but you can still look at it, but it's clear. And you can talk with at least two of the three people that finished it off, and they'll tell you, people are pretty happy with what we have. So, uh, it, it, it's just my sense, maybe I'm wrong, but I've been there before.
There are, there are some people that are pretty keen on keeping things the way they are.
And it's gonna take a lot of good justification if we wanna do it, so a cost justification here and a lot of things on the other side, okay. That, I, just, so get, get it right.
The only thing I would add in there is I totally agree with you. I have no feeling one would be able to yet, because we don't have any data, uh, to make an analysis. But I would say the majority of the people in town are not gonna care so much how it's structured, they're gonna care how it performs. So the average person doesn't know how we assess which roads should be paved and how we get them paved and how we do the contracts or who they report into. And the same way for how the fields are maintained, who mows and when. They just care that it gets done. So I think it's incumbent upon us to look and say, what is the most effective and efficient way to use our resources? And if there's a different way of doing it, then let's evaluate that.
Well, and likewise though.
If the cost benefit says leave it the way it is, then we leave it the way it is. But I think that's our responsibility to take a look at that.
I'm, I'm not sure there's gonna be a hell of a big cost benefit to doing this.
If they're, well, that's what we're evaluating.
I think what you're gonna get is a more streamlined management structure of the way those three departments are run. Because if we, if we go all the way through and eliminate the elected boards like it's been suggested, Kevin is, the town administrator is gonna be the person that's, that's running those three departments.
Yeah, the cost benefit is just a term for doing the analysis of pros and cons. It doesn't mean you're having a dollar change.
I think there is absolutely dollars to be saved. One of the challenges is they, we have potential liabilities in terms of situations that have come in the past. Unfortunately, they tend to involve, um, personnel issues sometimes because of different ways that practices and policies have been, or lack of policies have been enforced and so on. And they're oftentimes things we can't talk about specifically because they are personnel issues and they are under, we've met in executive session for them.
Well, we need to talk about them in an executive session if they can't be talked about outside.
But, but we can talk about.
I've got a lot of experience with it and, John, I don't see it there.
No, we can talk about.
There are things that we can control.
No, no, we can talk about the generic, the general issues that are out there. There are some issues that having a more centralized management piece would allow us to reduce some liabilities. We would definitely talk, get part of the cost justification.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see that as a big deal quite frankly.
I see it as a big, big deal, so it'll be, we'll have a conversation.
I think Robin brainwashed you on that subject.
No, I don't think she did at all, but that's another one.
Well, it, it's probably premature to discuss.
We're not gonna talk about that in the analysis.
I, I, I would just like to, I would just like to, there are, there are some old timers in town that totally agree and, and are totally supportive of cemeteries. And parks and cemeteries, and they've, they've, they've been involved in town government on those boards only for years and years. Highway is the same way. When you, when you tell some of those people that we're gonna do away with those elected board, they're gonna, they're gonna react and say, you can't do that.
Actually, Phil Knowles has been very supportive.
I'm not, I'm not talking about Phil Knowles, I'm talking about other people that have been around a lot longer than Phil Knowles, okay?
Phil's been, how long has he been on the board?
Thirteen years.
Yeah, thirteen years.
And he was one.
I'm talking about people that go back longer than that, okay?
Well, you have to take the inside of people who are running things.
But, but, but point is, but his support, his support is important, because he, he has a way about him that when he says something, people listen.
Can I bring this back here? I think this belongs on here. It will be necessary to justify it and make the case. We will have to be thoughtful how we do that. But I think it is a question that is worth doing. Now, we can, I think another time, talk about the pros and cons and so on. My own sense is it should go on there as a question. If the question in, that really is, no, 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 we don't wanna mess with it, we wanna leave it just exactly the way it is. That is a conversation we should have sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I, I would not put anything before the town unless we have thoroughly done our homework to answer the question of why we're even proposing.
Okay, so.
I, I think it's premature, the where we stand, in my opinion, where we stand right now, I think it's premature to put it on a warrant.
Okay, so what I'm gonna.
I agree.
I don't think we're ready to do that yet.
Now, that's gonna be, at the end of all of this, one of the discussions this committee, how much can we swallow between now and March thirty-first or whatever the.
Dick, what I would like to do is, um, because I've already spent.
Keep going.
I've already spent time talking with, um, Kevin on this. Uh, we'll put together rationale. I think that's totally appropriate. And we'll come back and we will figure out, yes, we're gonna include it as a warrant article or not. But I think there's a lot of factors out there begun, beyond just the sort of sense that, oh, that's the way we've done it, it's always worked in the past. That I think need to be at least brought up for people to consider ourselves.
Well, I don't, I don't feel that way. I don't feel that it's the way we've all done it.
No, I'm not saying, I don't wanna get into the conversation now, I'm just saying that that is a conversation we should have.
I think it should be done, but I think we ought to do it carefully and timely.
We're going to do that, so, um, we need to find time to talk about that. We'll work out when to do that. And we'll bring that to the board, it'll be a board decision. Um, let's go on to the third, please.
That's an easy one.
Yes.
That's an easy one on here.
Yeah, uh, the only question is how much effort is it? And if I could offer a thought, and I don't know the implications of this, can we just kind of refer to us more often as select boards, select board? Officially write signs, what a selectman when you have to sign a contract, and maybe next year, between now and next year, get this kind of worked out so that. I don't know, if the details are easy to do, okay, but if, if there's any amount of effort at this, at this juncture, six weeks to go, I say, make it, make it so we refer to it in the newspapers and everything else in select board, but when we do a legal document, we don't have to change, that's my thought.
What did KP say?
So it's already been the hopper for about three weeks, so KP has it. They're gonna actually draft the language, because it's very specific to how they wanna, um, reference it so that. And Lauren gave you a very quick overview, but I'm way.